All right, it's 6:30. I'm going to call the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting to order. And our first item of business is the Issaquah-Hobart Study Update. This is an informational item from Fay Shaffey and our Transpo Group consultant. So just as a reminder, this is, for me, it's an informational part of what the data that's been gathered so far. There's no decision making here. There's no proposals of exactly what to do or anything of that nature. It's kind of a midterm that we just want to keep people informed of what we've found out so far. And then the next steps after this will be then going to look more deeply into that. Okay? So Fay, please take it away.
Good evening. I'm Fay Shaffey, Senior Transportation Engineer in Public Works Engineering. Here tonight to provide project update for the Issaquah-Hobart Front Street Corridor Study. And we have set aside, our goal is to present this information in about 20 minutes. And the format will be, I'll go over the, I'll overview the project and then turn it over to our consultant, Transpo, to discuss the details of the analysis and the traffic study. And at the end of the presentation, we will reserve some time for questions and comments. So the study was initiated as a response to local concerns about traffic flow issues on Issaquah-Hobart Road and Front Street. And the city and King County have joined together and partnered on this study to determine solution, to find solutions that would address traffic flow issues and improves efficiency of the existing corridor. This study is intended to help us better understand what is happening in the corridor and to identify why we have some problems in certain areas. And the goal of this project is to identify improvements that can help enhance safety and travel time reliability along the corridor. For today's presentation, we would like to share with you a summary of where we are on this project and highlight what the data inventory has told us about the corridor and to share with you the types of solutions that could be considered for this corridor that would help address some of the issues and traffic flow problems. Our schedule is a ninth month work program that began in April of this year. And we have, Transpo has collected extensive and comprehensive data for the corridor and has done extensive analysis, operational analysis for the corridor. We are now focused on potential solutions and project identification. And we are working towards having a final report by the end of the year. You're all probably familiar with the corridor and the project limits. In the north, Front Street, the project limit is at Gilman Boulevard. And at the south end is at SR-18. And from Gilman Boulevard to Southeast 96 is within the city limits and from there to SR-18 is within unincorporated King County. The agency objectives are, we are trying to provide a comprehensive inventory of existing corridor conditions, and this could help us with common baseline for the project. And to investigate future operations, speed and safety issues, and consider both existing and future needs that will help improve the operation of the corridor. Also, to provide conceptual designs, strategies and cost systems for implementing short-term and long-term multimodal improvements and provide an action plan on how to move forward these improvements. Also, to identify the lowest cost and highest value improvements that enhance safety and reliability along the corridor and to prioritize the improvements. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Transpo, John Pascal from Transpo Group. He's a project manager for this corridor study. He will present the technical information.
That's on. All right. So, thanks Fay. Pleased to be here tonight. So we know things have been changing along the corridor over the years. And so one of the major parts of the work program was collecting information. So we had a baseline of information which to work from. So we had factual information on what the current conditions were. So we collected safety information, mobility information. I was going to share with you some of the results of the data that we collected. The first was a comprehensive inventory of the safety issues, you know, what's occurring, what's the collision history looked like over the last five years. And what we found, I don't think is surprising for folks who drive, who travel the corridor every day, but higher concentration of collisions in downtown, along Front Street. There's a lot more activity there, a lot more conflict points. And so that's what the analysis showed. As we move south along the corridor, there are a number of collisions. It's related to a lot about the rural nature of the corridor, the higher speeds, the curves, site distance. And so you saw a lot more, we saw a lot more kind of run off the road collisions. Things tended to be more severe at times because you were dealing with higher speeds. So it's a range of different safety issues along the corridor depending upon where you're at. The other item that we looked at was collecting traffic volumes across the corridor. So this is just a snapshot of one particular location, south of Sunset Way. But we collected this type of information from multiple locations along the corridor to make sure we had a comprehensive inventory. And you see how the daily volume fluctuates depending upon where you are, anywhere from 9,000 just south of Sunset to over 20,000 between Sunset and Cedar Grove, so in the county section. So it does fluctuate on quite significantly depending on section. We also saw the pronounced peak periods. You know, we all feel these who travel. What's interesting about the AM is it's much more pronounced because that's when school and commuter traffic intersect, both happening at the same time in the PM. It's more spread out. It's still moving a lot of vehicles, but you have the school offset from the commuter peak hour. To provide some context to the traffic volumes, because what does 10,000 vehicles mean or what does 500 vehicles mean along a one lane, a lane? We looked at travel speeds. And so what we did was we actually drove the corridor over multiple days throughout the different time periods to collect a wide range of travel speeds. We matched that with some information we got from INREX and also looked at kind of the historical Google Maps just to kind of see that we're in line. And what we found was, I think, probably consistent with what you experienced, recognizing that there is variability seasonally, day of the week. But on average, this is what we found. And you see in the AM northbound direction, you see the slow speeds and the queuing south of May Valley Road and then kind of the constant rolling queue north of there into downtown and to Second. And then in the PM, you see a lot more of the congestion and slower speeds. And downtown frees up just slightly as you get south to Second, but then you get the rolling queue again as you approach May Valley and Cedar Grove, and then it frees up. So I think that confirms a lot of what folks experience along the corridor, but what we had is really good information at specific points. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this slide because it presents a lot of information. And what I want to say is that we collected a lot of data about how people traveled along the corridor. And that's something unique to this corridor study. We set up Wi-Fi readers along the corridor, throughout the corridor, and basically inventoried when one Wi-Fi signal was picked up at one location, we could track it through anonymously. Don't know who that was or where they, anything about them, but what we know is kind of where they were traveling. And then we're able to match that up. And so we have two maps here. One on the left is the AM. And so what that is, is basically distribution of traffic of the vehicles that are south of SR-18. As they enter the corridor, where do they go? And so what we see is about 50%, 55% actually go all the way through, past Sunset, and then they either kind of disperse on Gilman, get on I-90, or go north. And then the other 50% disperse before that, mainly along Second or Newport Way, with a few, you know, further south on the corridor. In the PM, it's reverse. So those vehicles that are entering the corridor at the north end, front, where do they go? Well, about 55% go all the way through the corridor, 35% get on Highway 18, and another 20% go south all the way through. So that confirmed, I think, a lot of kind of tangential information that we all thought about the corridor, like, hey ma'am, maybe about half the traffic is passed through. Well, this kind of confirmed that. One of the things that we wanted to be sure of at the very beginning was to collect stakeholder feedback, really the users of the corridor. What are they experiencing? What ideas do they have really about the types of groups and people? And so we interviewed a cross-section of representatives from those various organizations here. Some of the common themes from that feedback were things that I believe we understand, just the constant congestion, it seems to be worsening, the variability, that if there's a problem somewhere in the system, it just creates intense kind of a ripple effect along the corridor. There's a lot of concern about impacts to the neighborhoods and the businesses. And then solutions. And I think the common thing about solutions was safety was a high priority and specific localized improvements were what the stakeholders wanted. So I think what's notable wasn't, people weren't necessarily looking for a corridor-wide solution here. We summarized all the problems that we found from our analysis, and this was just a way to simplify those results, which is just a series of bullets. But the report has a lot more detail on the problems, but really around the safety issues, you know, where the collisions were occurring, what types of collisions, what were contributing factors to those? Was it parking maneuvers in downtown? Was it additional pedestrian crossings? Was it the amount of turning vehicles? Was it, you know, there's a whole host of reasons. And then the mobility issues, you know, what's with the congestion? When was that occurring? Where were some of the bottlenecks along the system that we should be paying attention And then there's some confusion about this. And what we wanted to do was we wanted to produce a range of potential solutions that we could consider to address some of the issues. Now, these are things, and I emphasize that word "could" consider. These aren't things that we're recommending, but these are things that we're considering to address some of the problems along the corridor. And I listed a few here, but we attached a two-page handout to your packet tonight, and that's available online, that has a lot more detail on the types of solutions. And what we mean by toolbox is you could basically pick off a solution and see if that would address one of the issues that we identified along the corridor. Things that we looked at, pedestrian improvements, bicycle improvements, intersection improvements, corridor-wide treatments, transit strategies. So those are some of the different types of things that we're considering. We haven't arrived on any one of them yet. In order to be able to come up with recommendations, we had to have criteria in which to evaluate the ultimate projects. And so this criteria is tied back to the goals and objectives of the study, but it's really three criteria: safety, reliability, and ease of implementation. And that's a key one because what we don't want is something, we really want to try to get at those things that we can do in the next five years or so that can address some of the issues. We recognize that there's a lot of issues. We're not going to get to all of them, but there are some specific things we can look at. And so we wanted to make sure we had objective criteria in which to prioritize and rank the projects. And this is a listing of the criteria that we'll plan to be utilizing. And so finally, just to wrap it all up, I guess what I wanted to say for this slide is that this is kind of how it all comes together. So it's kind of the recipe, so to speak. You collect the data, you evaluate the corridor, you identify where those problem areas are along the corridor. You have a list of potential solutions that you can be considering, and you match those solutions to the problems. From that, you create a project list, a detailed list. And from that, we can develop cost estimates, we can figure out how we can implement that project, whether it's grant-eligible, whether there's other ways we can partner with King County or other agencies to actually implement something and build something. And I think I can turn it back over to Fay to summarize next steps.
Thank you, John. The next steps are, we will be working on preparing and finalizing the project list, which would include detailed description of the proposed improvements. And in order to help move projects forward, the high-priority projects will be evaluated more closely to have a greater chance at implementation and funding. The report will be summarized, they summarize the analysis that has been done for the corridor. And we will have a detailed project list that we can use to, I guess, for maybe capital projects, or maybe there would be some projects that we could maybe have a partnership with King County to implement those projects and have a joint project. That's the end of the, now we have time for questions and comments.
Thank you for that. So there's quite a few questions. So who would like to start? And we have all, a bunch of them. So let's do a few at a time here. Whereas if you have 10 questions, let's not get them all at once.
So I think I copied you on this bill, but Sheldon, I had sent you email on the 19th. And it had a comment and three questions. The comment was that I had asked when we reviewed the scope whether or not this study would look at other options rather than just assuming that all the traffic on Front Street needs to stay on Front Street, needs to grow. So that was the comment. The questions were, what problem is the city of Issaquah trying to solve? How does the list of projects in Issaquah improve the Issaquah community? And by that, I mean those that live here and pay taxes here and would pay for part of this project list. And did we reach out to the cities in southeast King County whose residents use this corridor? And did we include them in the scoping of this work? And I ask that because after looking at the slideshow, it appears that 68% of the traffic is coming from south of 18. So it's not from the travel shed on Issaquah-Hobart Road, and it's not Issaquah residents. It's actually southeast King County residents.
So, let me pull up the email so I can look at the questions at the same time. So, first question that you had was, what problem was the city of Issaquah trying to solve and was willing to contribute to half the cost of this study? The city is trying to understand, we hear a lot of comments about what, you know, the backups on Issaquah-Hobart Road, Front Street, and things like that. One of the problems we were trying to solve was, what is the real problem? And so this study provides that information to the community of Issaquah, its elected officials, as well as the communities south of here, so that people can better understand what the problem really is. So that's one of the...
But isn't the problem that 68% of the traffic is coming north of 18 and not going on 18?
I think what you saw in the data that was reported by the consultant in their analysis was that there is a lot of cars that are going south of here, but there's also a lot of congestion and so forth in pockets. You know, the heat map that showed the different delays and issues associated with the corridor. And so it actually identified that there are some spots that create the congestion just because of the way that section of road operates. It's not necessarily due to all of the cars going south. There are operational issues associated with those sections of the corridor. Examples of that would be Long Front Street, Front Street North. There's a lot of pedestrian crossings that impact the, you know, the ability for vehicles to move, creates congestion. The signal at Front and Sunset could use some enhancements, which we have a capital project for already in our concurrency model. We have parking, people that stop and park. All of that starts to affect the operations, which causes congestion, as well as the conflicting movements and so forth that John mentioned that are going on in the section of Front Street. So it's not just the cars going south. It's also how the roadway operates.
So let me just jump in here. Slightly different take on that question. I think when we started this effort, we didn't know what the problems were for Issaquah-Hobart Road. Anecdotally, we know a lot about Issaquah-Hobart Road. We know it's congested. We know it's getting, it's gotten more difficult to navigate that roadway. I think a big part of this study is just to give us all, to get us all on the same page when we're talking about Issaquah-Hobart Road, so we have a better understanding of the data as John walked us through that. And so where are the delays? What are the volumes, as you pointed out? Where are they coming from? Where are they going to? I think we can make better decisions if we're all, rather than operating on what we think we know, operating from a same set of facts. So that's one of the reasons, I think that's an important outcome of this project. I don't think that the goal was to solve the problems of Issaquah-Hobart Road with this study. I think a big effort of this study was to gain a better understanding of what Issaquah-Hobart Road, how that functions regionally, how it impacts Issaquah. So, and I think we're getting there. I think one of the outcomes of this work is going to be, when we have a better understanding of where the problem points are and we start looking at potential solutions, I think, I think this is the first step in that conversation. It's not the last step in the conversation. So this is the starting point. Let's get us all on the same page and understand what we're really talking about here. Let's look at a potential list of solutions and see if any of those fit with, you know, and the other thing is, there's two agencies involved here, obviously. So there's the interest of Issaquah, there's the interest of King County. I think one of the questions, one of the interesting questions, I think, is, at the end of this work, will there be efforts that make sense for both of us to partner on? Will there be pieces of this that make more sense for King County to tackle, or there be parts of it that make sense for Issaquah to tackle? So, you know, we're not there yet, so I can't give you a full answer to your question about why we did it. And I guess at the end of the day, we can each come to our own conclusion on whether this was a valuable effort. I think it is because, like I said, it gets us all in the same place. It starts that conversation about how Issaquah-Hobart Road, both figures into our city and into the region. And I think there's been some assumptions about, at least since I've been here, there's been some assumptions about what the function of Issaquah-Hobart Road should be that may not be congruent with what we think the function of Issaquah-Hobart Road could be. I mean, when you look at some of the data here, the congestion and the travel speeds, there's sort of, you know, a major widening of Issaquah-Hobart Road that's going to deal with that congestion. So I think we need to stop thinking about Issaquah-Hobart Road as a congestion relief corridor and think about it as a one piece of the regional road system. And we need to think about how that regional road system functions. We've talked a lot about, you know, and we're talking regionally about SR-18 and 900 and what role those roads should play in the regional system. And it may be that, one of the best things that comes out of this study is a realization that Issaquah-Hobart Road is not the solution to regional traffic. And, yeah, maybe a lot of us already suspected that or knew that, but I think now we have data to support that. So not exactly answers your question, but I think there's some value.
Sort of, actually, it was a little more technical than what I was asking, but it was still really helpful. In terms of what is Issaquah trying to do and why did we do this study? I would simply look at this and say, because we wanted to find a way to get 30,000 cars to I-90. That's why we did it, because that's what the project list looks like, ways to move that same volume or a higher volume of cars to the highway.
So, okay, so we don't have a project list yet.
Right, potential toolbox.
We have toolbox that we'll be using to propose projects. I think, honestly, I think it's a little premature to talk about the project list because we don't have it yet. And I think there's a lot of goals of what we're trying to think about accomplishing with Issaquah-Hobart Road. And I don't think moving a lot of vehicles is necessarily, if, John, if you want to pull up that toolbox, I don't think that, you know, increasing capacity is, or moving more cars through Issaquah is a priority. I was thinking more just the toolbox slide you had there, John.
Oh, not the actual toolbox.
Not that, not that I want to necessarily get into the details. We can, but...
Does the toolbox have projects that reduce the volume of traffic on Front Street?
So, the toolbox comprises, I consider multimodal toolbox, so it's looking at the whole range of solutions, so both capacity, both safety, and pedestrian and bicycle and transit. So it's meant to have all-encompassing, essentially, not rule out anything at this point because we haven't reached a project list yet.
But is the goal to manage the volume you have now, or is there a goal in there to reduce the number of vehicles on Front Street? Are there tools in the toolbox to move us from 30,000 vehicles a day down to 10?
So I would say, there's more of the toolbox. This is a summary of what some of the tools could be. So just to look at a couple of those over on the right side there, I think certainly I can see having a more transit focus on that corridor would reduce the number of vehicles. So, for example, if we, I don't know exactly what these mean because we haven't gotten that far yet. We don't have the projects identified. But if there was projects that came out of this study that, for example, boosted the shallow van pool incentives, that certainly could get more people in, out of their vehicles and into transit. The park and ride, we've talked a lot about, and depending on where, we might consider locating park and ride facilities if those, if you, I'm just, you know, speculating here, but if we were looking at something that locate a park and ride facility south of town, more towards 18, then you could, I could imagine a scenario where a bunch of people would come to the park and ride, they'd park their car there, they'd get on more frequent bus service that would take you to either I-90 or the Issaquah Park. So short and long answer to your question, but again, this isn't everything that's on there, but it's, I guess, I want to make the point that it's, this isn't, this isn't a capacity, volume, get more cars in Issaquah effort. There's a lot of other pieces of it. There's safety, there's looking at other options. I mean, if you look back at those, if you look back at those maps, you know, we're not going to, unless we're looking at a different kind of, unless we're envisioning a different kind of Front Street than we currently have, which I don't think we are, there is, we, there is not a way to get more traffic through downtown Issaquah.
Yes. So just kind of to somewhat, I think you're trying to say, your question is, is there a goal here to increase or decrease vehicles? And the answer, as I understand it, is there's no such goal because that's not a goal we defined. That we're trying to do either increase or decrease. That's not a goal that's been stated in my mind in any way. So it's just been, at this point, gathering data, which we're getting now, and then looking at some of those things because it said the number one priority that I saw was safety, right? And looking at some of those things because of all the crash data and all the rear-end collisions and so forth that are showing up on there. And everybody, that was the number one issue. The second one was that. But none of these tools up here really look at capacity. Like, I don't see anybody here talking like they want to increase capacity. I'm not hearing that. I'm just going to...
I'm just going to share with you. And, you know, no one stated that, but we're seeing that. And these tools of, you know, school bus pullouts or, you know, pedestrian traffic and, and safety, those aren't looking at capacity at all. So I'm not saying I'm defining the answer, but that's the way I'm reading. If that helps you. No one's, no one's trying to say, let's get more cars through. Best I can answer on that one.
And then the second question was, what do the cities in southeast King County think of this? Have they been involved and at the table as stakeholders? Because most of this traffic is coming through cities in southeast King County.
And can I add to that question a little bit? Because that's the thing, I guess I was concerned, when you look at the stakeholder feedback, the group, the stakeholders, to me, was kind of, I guess, a little lacking. So we got a lot of Issaquah involvement there from, you know, downtown association, school district, et cetera. And we got King County in there, obviously, the two people that are sharing with us. Other than that, we've got Miramont in there, which is obviously a, you know, a big chunk of housing and, and folks that are concerned about this. And then we got some, you know, east side fire and rescue and, you know, concerned with emergency stuff. And we got sound transit in there at least, and metro. So I, I'm, in my mind, there's a lot more, I think your question is, that needs to be in there. Particularly people, just general folks are not in there at all. The public part of this has not been public to the public. And it's missed the whole communities down there, such as Black Diamond proposing 2,000 new residences in Black Diamond and what that effect would have, right? And, and the whole thing down there. And, and what happens with construction down there, they collect impact fees. It doesn't extend beyond, you know, the, the neighborhood of which those fees are collected. So that's, that's kind of a bigger and broader thing. But I'm, I'm hearing what you said and I'm, and I'm saying there that, you know, citizens really, other than, outside of Miramont, I don't see any citizen involvement here. And I don't see the communities down there, particularly because we have folks down there that are actually talking about a transportation benefit district for southeast King County. And if we're not talking to them, and I'm not sure that's, you know, ever going to come about, but it's being talked about at least. And, and so that whole, whole group and so forth down there with all those cities down there, I think need to definitely be involved because it's, as we see, 55% are coming from, from there. So that's just a thought. And I hope that kind of answered your question and kind of brought my delight as well.
Well, I just don't know who they talked to, but you're right. I don't know. The question was, who did you talk to?
Well, that's a list they have, in the report, they have the stakeholder list there.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, did you talk to the cities in southeast King County?
No, we did not talk to the cities in southeast King County. They're, they're actually involved, as Bill was saying, in another effort, RTSI effort, in which, you know, Issaquah, King County, those cities are all talking about how to address the traffic that's coming from the southeastern part of King County and trying to figure out regionally how to make the traffic work, be it bringing transit out there more, you know, all the options are on the table that that group is looking at. This was, I would say, it's an initiative by King County and Issaquah to understand a road that majorly impacts both the county and the city of Issaquah and kind of jump starting, you know, our ability to be able to say to the region, hey, there's not a whole lot we can do here. So let's get on with fixing some of the other regional roads. 18, 169, 167, 900. Let's get on with fixing the real regional roads. And Issaquah Hobart has some safety and operational issues we need to correct because we're not going to be able to change character of that road for all intents and purposes.
I think you can comment a couple of questions. I do like what was said earlier that this corridor is just part of the regional network. And the network itself is, is overburdened and fragile. One piece has an issue, the whole network suffers. And, and that is the, and, but at the same time, we have to realize there's really, how can, there's really no way to simultaneously do something, make improvements to the entire network, you know? But we have to start somewhere. And I'm going to go back to the original bill. Well, we authorized this study last August 1st of 2016. There's a very important comment, very simple statement in that bill that says, "Traffic currently backs up into Issaquah from King County's Issaquah Hobart Road." And I tell you, that's the place that, that I think where the real meat of this is. It's what, it's when it backs up into Issaquah, primarily during the peak. I mean, there's, there's issues all the time, as, as your data points out, but that was the one. What's, what's happening? It's when it backs up in the peak, like we have today out there with a little bit of rain on the road. I think that's a really, that was a key part when we, for me, when we approved this bill to do this last, last year, 2016. Could you go back to slide eight and right there? And the second bullet is the highest number of all of those. So I think this is saying that at peak, at least for the data that you collected, there, at any portion of this road, there's 20,400 vehicles, okay, trips total, north and southbound, any one section.
Yeah, for that, for that sec, for that segment within that, yeah. The highest is around 20,000, yeah.
So, and when did you collect this data?
This was in the springtime, right before school was out. So we made sure to get information.
Oh, so May or June?
Yeah, May.
It was May timeframe? Okay, during school?
We usually like to try to collect data either in the, in the fall after school starts or before school gets out. So those typically represent pretty average timeframes.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. And with school in session, we're getting those trips on the road as well. Okay, so your data says that at any one section, about 20,000 trips, north and south, is the max. Okay. And then I was, one thing I was wondering is, I saw some data at an RTSI meeting where PSRC showed delay times along Issaquah Hobart Road. Are you aware of that data? And do you, you, you guys aware of that? Have you seen it? Know what, what they measured?
I don't know.
So that last, that was the last one I'm aware of, you guys? They showed something, and I don't know what the timeframe was of, of comparing durations, you know, from when to when, but they did show it pretty significant. And so PSRC has that data. If, I, I don't know how this correlates or overlays here because I don't know where their measurements were.
Yeah, I've, I've seen that data and we can certainly track that down for you all if that's helpful. I've, I've seen, I think it basically reinforces what we're talking about, but it's, it's a different data set, so.
Well, and I don't know what it actually measures.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't know if it was, I don't remember what direction. So the, the, and then on the next slide, slide nine, and when, this is shown in a couple places on the, on the earlier accident data map as well. So it's unfortunate that we didn't collect data into the other feeder roads, southbound, or, or either way. Because it's pretty, no doubt in my mind, or anybody's mind who drives around here, it's just like, I came off Squawk Mountain and guess what? Newport Way is backed up quite a bit. And it's, it's people slowly in a queue to merge to southbound Front Street. And so we don't have any, we didn't get any data off there. And I think we can often see the same thing as well, especially in the PM. But I don't, I don't travel that one as much, along Sunset and then maybe down south on Second Avenue. So really, you know, one of the, that big congestion area where the slowest speed is up at the top end of this, what this picture doesn't show is that we actually have two other roadways that we're really, are taking three lanes of traffic and getting it into one. And I think you would see, you know, average speeds, maybe not exactly like you have here on Front Street. But Newport Way, there's probably, is definitely affected by that. And Second Avenue is as well. So I think that's important, what we realize, that we are taking three lanes of road into one. And then I think what's really jumps out at me too is that bulb, but at five miles an hour, it's actually just, it's south of the city limits, probably near the landing spot for Pooh Pooh Point. But, I mean, I think about all the, all the cars on that and the PM. If that zone is going five miles an hour, I mean, it's, this is the data, I think, that demonstrates that in addition to three lanes coming into one, is that it is just congestion southbound on Hobart Road itself that is adding, create, is part of the congestion problem that's happening in Issaquah in the PM. So I'm really glad to see that data. On the next slide, you said something interesting, especially in the PM. You said it shows that maybe half our traffic is, is, is drive-through. Now, when I add those numbers up, you know, it looks like, you know, 15% leave southbound Front Street still in Issaquah. And then the, the remainder of it, a full, you know, 85%, gets off at either May Valley Road or Cedar Grove or up into Miramont or then to 18 and stuff below. So, but, I'm sorry, so it's, it's actually would be 88%. So I didn't understand your comment that maybe half of it is, is pass-through. I mean, it looks, I mean, if I add those numbers up and, so if you meant something different or have a different interpretation, please tell me. But that looks like 88% is passed through in the PM.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was referring to the corridor as a whole and not the corridor, the city corridor. I was referring to city and county corridor together as one corridor, in which case it would be 55% goes through the entire length of the corridor. But you're right. I mean, if you just break it up to the city, then, yeah.
So that's pretty significant. We, and, and I think it does get to this whole point. I mean, absolutely agree with any contention that, I, I spoke to a woman who works here on Front Street, lives south, south of Highway 18. She has her children drive this corridor instead of go to 18 because she feels it's safer for them, so when they're coming through. And, and I think that just screams to that, 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 you know, the network requires that 18 have capacity, be reliable. And, and I know there's some steps being taken there with the interchange, but, but, but adding additional capacity, adding lanes to 18 is definitely part of the regional formula, you know, so that whomever it is, whether it's, it's a mother talking, telling her children or anybody else who, who, who really wants to go south, I-90 to 18 is, has to be a viable, has to become a viable alternative. If we're ever going to get these numbers to change and vastly reduce the number of car trips just pass through in the evening. That says 88%, which is, which is really pretty fascinating. That's much higher than I thought it was even.
This information was used to develop a corridor operations model that includes all of downtown and all the side streets and May Valley Road and the entire kind of network, so to speak. And so we also have a future model that incorporates all the land use in the region, in the city, in the county, and then also includes those projects in the 2040 PSRC plan, which Highway 18 is, is in that 2040 plan.
The interchange.
Yep. And so, so our forecasts kind of account for, you know, what might happen and how that changes things along the corridor. So that's part of what we are doing, that we didn't share today, but we are accounting for as we analyze the needs in the future.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate the, the mention also of transit. The idea, because some of that, I, it'd be interesting to know how much of that northbound traffic in the morning is headed to one of our transit centers. You know, you can, at most, it's 17% probably headed to the one on Newport Way. And, and that was one thing we were wondering, you know, is, is, is by having additional transit, be able to capture trips closer to their origin further south, without, how much would that reduce the number of drive alone trips into town? And so we're starting to get that picture from this data, but that would be great to try to quantify a little bit more. But in general, so I think, you know, I, I agree with the, we have, we have information now and I think there's a lot of, but how to apply it and what additional information we still need to be making smart policy decisions here within the city, but also within the region with our partners. I mean, this is, this is a good first step, but I feel, I feel like it's just a first step.
Here. You have more, Mary Lou? Because I kind of, that's all your questions?
Yeah, and this one, yeah.
And this one? Okay. So that's it for you, Paul?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I got a couple then. So, so this is good. I'm glad you explained. It took me a while to figure out where all the percents were going, but once I did, it had, does have a lot of information. So things that brought to my mind was, you know, the folks that are turning off to May Valley, Cedar Grove and Miramont, Tiger Mountain, you know, to me, those are, they're not pass-through traffic. They're getting to somewhere probably locally there that, that pretty much they have to use Issaquah Hobart Road predominantly. Maybe a few could use 900, but I'm assuming that, that they have to use that. It is that 55% you have at the bottom going through that is definitely, could consider an alternate route. Then your, the heat map, yeah. I was surprised, I, on southbound there on the right, it looks like, I'm assuming that the little bulb there is at the airport or, right?
Right.
Okay. So that's probably, yeah, Pooh Pooh Point, yeah, all right. So that's probably a lot of distracted drivers and other things that there's, there's, that's just probably how the road works. And with the distractions of things going on and so forth that, that probably relate to, to some of the congestion there because it's going above and below that pretty well. The other one that, I was on northbound, the, the big one there, and that's, I'm assuming that Cedar Grove Road almost up to May Valley Road. And, and that just pops up there with, with things. And so the reason for that, I'm not sure, I could make a few guesses, but, you know, that's, that's not clear to me on a northbound way why that really backs up there so much and then opens up again. And I did notice that because I, I was foolish enough to drive the show a couple of times recently just to check it out because I usually avoid it at these times. And I did feel those two spots, you know, of slowdown. It was like, oh, okay. And then I saw them, I was, yeah, that's right. That's, that's really accurate. I did feel those two spots of slowdown when it was going. Well, so, but the reason on that, now, and some of this, I wonder a little bit about truck traffic because we had, you know, a lot of truck traffic has rerouted through 900, May Valley and, and come back in there. But if they're really coming in May Valley, that seems to be a little bit south of May Valley, so it doesn't quite play with that explanation? So I'm trying to sort that out.
AM peak, we don't have that many trucks usually during the AM peak commute hours. It's later in the day that we see truck traffic there.
Yeah, okay.
And that could be from the intersections and the alignment of the roadway and the lack of left turn lanes and people are trying to turn into and out of the side streets maybe as a result of that.
All right. So, so I guess when you're talking about, you know, not a capacity issue, but just a road function issues, of course, those are the spots that, you know, look at maybe some things that could be done to not cause that to happen and just, you know, a little more reliability of flow where some things might help.
So the, if you look at also the collision history on that, on the slide seven, you see where the hotspots are. So we are looking at the accidents and the type of accidents at those locations.
Yes.
It is on.
It's on.
And the type of accidents at those locations so that we can determine what are the causes of those accidents and what can we do to improve? It could be maybe they need some signing. It could be the, maybe at nights, maybe it's dark, it needs illumination or maybe needs a left turn or is a sideline, side distance issue. So those are the things we're trying to address with this project.
All right. Thank you. People did bring up the issue of transit and just, because I'm a little knowledgeable on that. The push for transit, the first push on these areas out of here would be for 900 would be the first road that would get transit. Issaquah Hobart would be the next one, but that's, that's probably pretty far down the line in the current planning stages, just according to the metro plans in the future. So, you know, that, that may, you know, it would come there before here without some sort of push or change. Just, just informational to rely to, respond to some of those questions. I talked about public input already. And then I guess a technical question for you too. If there is a road improvement that was outside of Issaquah city limits, could we even spend money on that if it's a county road? Or that would be, you know, because you talked about who pays. To me, it's like, you know, I don't know, there's some partnerships involved, but normally we wouldn't spend money on roads that are outside Issaquah city limits. Does it take some sort of partnership agreement to do that?
It would take a partnership agreement between the city and the county.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay. And then, and then going back to my questions on the CIP list that we talked about previously. So if something did come out of this, that we got a project that someone decided we wanted to do, then that I assume would again, get put on our CIP list and dealt with through that process.
That is correct.
Okay, just, all right. And I like what you said about, I think the realization is this can't be fixed. You know, no one's going to come in here and just fix this. It's not going to flow. There's no way that someone's going to make a bunch of lanes out here and, and add capacity. And Front Street is, is there and the rest of it's pretty much there. So there's not going to be, I don't think, major change expected here. So there's not going to be, I don't think, major change expected here. And, you know, to do something, I think what our goal is to hopefully try to, again, get folks going other ways through 18 and 90 and some other stuff and maybe some circulation improvements that just for safety and those kinds of things that'll, you know, improve it. I mean, like I got behind a school bus, and once you're behind a school bus, you're there for the duration of the road, right? So school bus pullouts could just, you know, that simple thing could add, add some capacities right there. So anyway, that's all my comments. Do you have any more?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing because something you said. Go down, John, two slides. Oh, the other direction, I'm sorry. Yeah, looking at it here, you can't tell. The color graduation isn't very clear. I have the PDF version in front of me, and I think what's really important, especially in the PM southbound, which you can't see, your data says that it looks like there are sections that peak out at an average speed of 20 miles per hour all the way down to May Valley Road. And then below that, it gets up to 30. That's what the, you can't see it there very well on what we're seeing up here. And think about that for a second. Think about that for a second. 20 miles an hour average in a road that's, that is designed and capable of carrying, you know, traffic at a higher speed than that, right? You can easily, I think, I think the speed limit's 40 once you get south of town. So they're averaging 20. That just says so much, so much about the excess number of cars on the road and whatever. And so the opportunity to find ways to unplug portions of this road so it can drain faster and not back up so much. That red bubble at the top there, you can't see it very well, it probably ends close to where Second Avenue comes in.
Right.
Right? And so anything that can improve the flow south, get the traffic rolling through to their destination, 20 miles an hour is pretty slow for that many miles in a road that's designed for some, for a greater speed. So it's just, it's not missed that. This is, this is going pretty slow.
My last comment, when we're looking at the traffic counts, pull that up for a second if we will, traffic volumes. Yeah. So I guess I was surprised, now we're talking of AM, right? But the, the big clump in the middle of Sunset to Cedar in AM northbound there is the highest volume. And north of Sunset and south of Cedar Grove are pretty much equivalent. And you have the big chunk in the middle where you're going, you know, 19,000 to 20,000, Sunset, Cedar Grove, and north and south of that, you're down into, you know, 9 to 15 range. Have any idea how those numbers came out, why we have a big bulge in the middle there?
I think it's just kind of like an hourglass, right? That's the section that's kind of where the traffic's funneling in and out at that segment. You know, essentially between Second and Cedar Grove is kind of the hourglass is how I, or May Valley, that is. So that's, so that 20,000, yeah, so that's kind of that area.
But that, that's how many vehicles are passing through at that time in the AM.
Oh, you're talking about the, are you talking about the AM or the daily?
Average daily traffic.
Daily traffic.
A daily traffic.
All day, 20, average day.
Okay, so, so still we have, they're coming in, but if they come in or go out there, they've got to go, you know, somewhere else.
Yeah.
So that's.
So north of there, they're peeling off at Newport or Second or Sunset or, and then south of that, they're peeling off at Cedar Grove, May Valley, Miramont. Yeah. Kind of, that's kind of how I think about it. Explain it.
All right. And that's, so that's kind of showing that bubble, I guess, that we added the speeds to maybe all that in and out traffic. Yeah, great. Thank you. Have all the questions for everybody? Okay. So at this point, our expectation are.
I thought you had a question.
Hang on a second. You'll, you'll get a chance. Expectations, you're going to take this data, look at the toolbox and maybe come up with some possible suggestions and what items might do to improve some safety and reliability, which are two goals, the safety and reliability, right?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So with that done, then it is time for public comment. So I'll let you step from there and as you want, please head up to the microphone and...
I don't really want to, but if you want.
But, but you have to because we're on the air and so you have to get to a microphone where you, if you can want to sit at this microphone, you can do that, but.
Could you go back to the peak hour traffic?
I'll do.
I wonder if you guys can, but let's do the view presentation.
And if you would, just step to the microphone there. You got to get in front of it and just give us your name.
Well, my name is Ray Skoff, and I've lived in Miramont since 1989.
Okay. Go ahead, tell us.
Could you, could you go back to the, the table that was on there that showed the traffic?
Working on it.
Capacity? I could, I could probably talk this without looking at it, but.
Which one do you?
Okay, there we are. So I know enough about this to get myself in trouble, so I apologize in advance. In fact, I apologize for the sweatshirt, but I'm retired, so you get to wear a sweatshirt all the time when you're retired. From what I remember is, let's say we had 20,000 vehicles going down Issaquah Hobart in one direction a day. That's really not above capacity if the traffic flow is even. But where you get in trouble is when, now tell me, in the old days, it was levels of traffic A through E. And once you get, D is pretty good, but you get, get into E, that's when you're in trouble, right? So, so the big issue is not the amount of traffic that goes down this road in a day. The issue is when you go above level D, which is, if I remember, it's like 1,200 to 1,400 cars per lane per hour, right? So I mean, that's the problem. It isn't that you have that many cars going down that road. It's during peak times. Now, one of the things you mentioned, and I thought, I'm really glad you said that, is for those of us who, who have lived in Miramont a long time and have gone from a little country road to, you can only get out of there between 10 and 2, the traffic, the truck traffic has increased significantly on that road. And it was really mitigated in downtown Issaquah. I think that was great, but unincorporated King County, right? We still have those trucks going up and down that road, and I don't know how the ratios work out, but one double under semi equals how many cars, right? So the reason I'm bringing this up is there, I do disagree with the comment that there are a limited number of things that can be done. I think there's a lot of inexpensive things that can be done. For one is limit truck traffic on Issaquah Hobart between peak hours when you're above capacity, which is 1,200 to 1,400 cars per hour. Look at things like, you know, when you're driving south on Issaquah Hobart, and let's say it's 6 o'clock in the evening, and you're going past Newport, and you got that slight turn to the right on Newport, right turn on right, and a right turn on red, and what it turns into is it's an every other car thing. That, I don't believe that was the intent of the right turn on red, but that's what's going on right now. So you could shut that down during peak hours and just say, hey, look, you can turn, but you can turn only on a green light. Also, people probably don't even want to think about this, but when you're above capacity or predicted to be above capacity on the freeway, what do you do? Well, what we're doing now, right, is we're metering. So you could, you could meter Cedar, you could meter May Valley, you could meter 18. And when we're hitting peak traffic hours, you just start restricting the traffic flow and all those feeders. Because, you know, actually, you know, like you said, you can't increase capacity. Well, you can increase capacity if you just give it to level D. So you restrict the number of cars that, you meter the number of cars and you ultimately will get more traffic going down that road. Another thing you could do, and people don't want to hear this either, is you could possibly toll those areas that have resulted from unregulated construction. You know, I, I think, I'm speaking for the people who live on, in unincorporated King County along Issaquah Hobart, is that this is more than a statewide infrastructure issue. This is personal to us. And if you look at the housing values for the, for the homes in Miramont, they have not gone up as certain areas in King County, and I'll bet you that's directly attributed to the, the traffic issues on Issaquah Hobart Road. So just things to think about. I, I think there are creative solutions. I, I saw them indirectly here, but I didn't see them discussed too much. But, you know, I'd appreciate a little more attention to those kind of things. There are big bang for the buck kind of things you can do. So, hey, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Some good suggestions. Chad?
Can I get the next slide, please? Slide nine. Chad Magindance, I've been a Miramont resident for 23 years, general agitator, but we, I look at this map, and maybe it's just because I'm an engineer, but it seems obvious to me that you're seeing the red behind the traffic lights. In each case, whether you're going northbound, you've got two traffic lights, at Cedar Grove and May Valley, and then the one at Second, you're seeing the red behind that. And, you know, when you're coming home, southbound, you're seeing the red behind the traffic light at Second and Newport. And this is actually good news because, you know, if you look at the two major intersections northbound, you know, Cedar Grove and May Valley, those are three-way intersections. A roundabout would give you a free northbound lane. You wouldn't even have to stop in the morning going northbound through both those intersections. And southbound is more challenging, but if you had a roundabout at Second and Front, that would at least keep that moving. And ideally, you would have a bypass, which was planned long ago, which I still think we should be revisiting considering the amount of traffic going through this. I did want to emphasize that it's not 1,600 homes being built in Black Diamond. It is 6,000 homes in the Ten Trails development. Oak Point is even talking about even more than that now. That's a lot. Now, 55% of the traffic is passed through, you know, going, you know, going past the people who have to use Issaquah Hobart. And I like your definition, Bill. I mean, we don't have a choice in Miramont. It's not like we're going to take 18 or something like that. But the 55% is going to grow. And I think involving those communities in whatever solution we come up with is going to be critical here, particularly from the state's perspective. You know, we've made a heavy investment in the 18 intersection, but we still have two lanes from the Raging River Bridge all the way down Issaquah Hobart Road. That needs to be completed. That has to be a number one priority. It is not budgeted anywhere yet. And 169 has some tactical improvements, but the capacity needs to be four lanes from where it intersects basically at Jones Road all the way to Richards Road down in Black Diamond. That needs to be a number one priority for the state right now, and it's not. And so that's what's going to address a lot of your pass-through traffic. So we have to look ahead. These 6,000 homes aren't going away. They're approved, they're part of the Growth Management Act. You know, we budgeted for these homes to be built, and as much as Black Diamond has tried to stop it, it's going to happen. And so we have to kind of look ahead and make sure that we're building infrastructure to support that, because that is the whole intent of the Growth Management Act. Where we know we're building our homes, we should be able to build infrastructure in advance to serve that, and we're not doing it yet. So that would be my advice, you know, look at roundabouts at the two intersections here in King County and the one in, in the city of Issaquah. Ideally, revisit the bypass. I know that that's politically charged, but that would be one way to keep so much traffic from going through our school zones. And having been on the school board all those years, you know, you got, you know, high school, middle school, elementary school, actually an alternative high school now, the Bus Barn, senior center, and the community center. It's just not the place to be funneling all this traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, you're next? Would you, anything else you'd like to say? No? I saw, I just got to get in line. Just scoot on down and everybody.
I'm Linda Shepherd, also from Miramont. And in addition to the 6,050 homes in the Ten Trails development, they're also talking about a shopping center the size of South Center. And that's also going to increase traffic. So that was one of the other things I wanted to bring up. And I, I really liked the traffic summit that was done earlier that was multi-jurisdictional, and I'd like to see more of that because it's a regional problem. We all know that. And, and I really like the idea of getting more input from Black Diamond and Maple Valley and the other stakeholders that use Issaquah Hobart Road. So those are my suggestions.
Thank you, Linda.
Hi, my name's Rick Ronninger, and I live south of town, south of Miramont, off the 252nd Avenue. It's about half a mile south of the entrance to Miramont. And, you know, while this is illustrative, it's not reality. You know, this morning, it's backed up to here. Two days ago.
Yeah, I need to keep you the mic so they can even hear you.
Two days ago, it was backed up south of 252nd as it was this morning. As far as truck traffic goes, I, I come into the Smamish Club at 5:30 in the morning to work out, and I turn around and go home at 8, 8:15. It's solid cars, basically from Second, you know, all the way south past, past 252nd Avenue. And, and truck traffic, trucks, every third vehicle is a truck. I mean, I specifically looked at that today, and every, every third one is a truck. It's, you know, it may not be a, a big semi truck, but it's a big commercial vehicle. I go out, and I've got great records, say, every now and then I go out and take a picture of the intersection at 252nd and Issaquah Hobart Road. And, you know, I've got records going back several years of this thing occurring. I don't want to see the Issaquah Hobart Road character change. I like the two-lane road. I've lived in my house for, since 85. So I've experienced the growth. I know that we got the 6,000 homes coming in and more. I just don't understand why the county and the state hasn't, haven't done anything to improve Maple Valley Highway, Highway 18, the interchange at I-90 and Highway 18. I mean, over here at SR-900, it took the state, somebody had to get killed. I think it was a whole family. They got killed while they were waiting to exit off of I-90 onto SR-900. And I don't know, what was that, 10, 15 years ago? The same thing's happening now up at I-90 in, in Highway 18. Couple other things that I had, ideas, is that poop, oh, this, right here, that extends further north. It goes up around the corner, it goes all the way to May Valley. So I think that red bubble needs to be expanded. I don't think it's accurate. Let's see, what else do I want to say here? Oh, it's average speed, five miles an hour. It, I don't know where you get to 20 miles an hour, especially in AM. That doesn't exist. You know, I, I ride my bike. I can ride my bike into town faster along the shoulder than, than the cars are going by a long shot. And that, you know, that's six miles into town. So it's, it's five miles an hour or less, basically, from, you know, southeast 156th all the way into town. And, you know, we need to, you know, as a resident of the valley, you know, I come into town all the time, buy my goods and services. You know, I'd like to see some good bike lanes, both directions. I don't understand why we don't have it. Some simple things that we could do, Pooh Pooh Point, why don't we have a trail that goes from the back of the high school down to Pooh Pooh Point? The trailhead. It's beautiful corridor back there. You know, it would relieve people from walking on the Issaquah Hobart Road in both directions. They'd have a safe place to travel and get to their, their favorite hike. I don't know why, you know, mountains to sound greenways. We've got a great organization. I've written them, but why don't we have a trail that goes down the west side of Issaquah Creek and connects the entire valley? And there's all kinds of easy possibilities, but it's, nothing's happening, you know? What else? I appreciate you guys taking on the study. I really do, because I think it needs to be, be done. But, you know, the solutions are really with the state and the King But, you know, the solutions are really with the state and the King County, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Mary?
Yeah, my name is Mary Lynch, and I really would have liked to also see May Valley included in this, because a lot of the problems, as they said, is the dual-haul trucks that are coming, some up from 18, but a lot of them are coming to and from Cedar Grove, then trying to get onto Isquahobart, and then turn off now onto May Valley Road. And it only takes one or two trucks in there in the turn lane that totally blocks up all the, you know, the northbound traffic in the morning. And those trucks start at 6 o'clock in the morning. And as I was saying, I've counted, and there's some days that every third vehicle, and sometimes it's every, you know, only one car and five trucks, especially on May Valley, as far as the number of trucks per car. The other thing, I've gone down Issaquahobart Road now for almost eight years, and I've counted the cars, and the cars are single occupancy. It's 1 in 20, do you get more than dual occupancy? So that's another issue. The other thing I really think is we need those people that are coming in, as far as in Issaquah, that are using the downtown area now and are parking rides, that are paying the price. And I really wish that we would have done some studies on, over here, because I see them at night. They come off the bus, they get in their cars, and they go south. And then in the morning, again, because I'm out early in the morning, they're coming in off of, through town and going into the parking ride over there on S-900. And so we really need to look at the alternatives of getting those people, you know, parking rides in their areas, getting them transit, and getting them to reduce the amount of traffic on here. But your truck traffic is one of your worst problems and the reasons why that's put down. And I heard you say the pullouts. Let me just tell you, one of the reasons why the schools stopped doing pullouts on Isquahobart Roads is there are stretches that get up to 40 to 45 miles an hour, and they're on curves. And you can't have a bus, a lot of kids pulling out into traffic if there is no traffic, because you've got cars going at 45 that you're pulling out. And then when there isn't traffic, or when there is traffic, they don't let the buses back in. So having, you know, bus pullouts, I don't think that the school district is going to let you do that. You can talk to them, but I don't think that's going to be an option. The other thing that the traffic study isn't showing right now is there has been a delay or a delayed start. So one of the reasons why you're going to see worse traffic this year than you've ever seen before is the late starts. So you've got Issaquah, or the high middle, that are going almost 50 minutes later in the morning. So they would have been off the roads by the time you began to get your peak travel time. Right now, they're in the middle of it, and then your elementaries now are in the middle of it. And since you don't have a three-tiered system with elementary, you've got all the elementaries going at once, again, you've got another six to 20 buses out on the roads than you did before. And that's in the morning, and ditto in the afternoon, because it's delayed. So all your school bus traffic is multiplied what it was last year, and it's during your heavy peak AM and PM hours.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, hang on. You ready, teachers?
I just want to be added to the list. I don't, I don't live in Miramont, so any meetings, they don't get any notice.
Okay, so that's a good question, add to the list, but we have, correct me if I'm wrong, you can get folks added in. Go ahead.
To get on the list of notifications of all council agendas or specific meetings, you can go to the city's website and sign up for an email list, and agendas and so forth, and packets are sent out to everybody on those lists.
I think he's asking to be a party of record for just things that have to do with Isquahobart Road.
Is that what you're asking?
I just want Isquahobart Road. I don't live in the city, so...
Okay, if you can give us your, if you give us your contact information, we can take that down.
So jot that down and leave it with Sheldon here. Okay, thank you. All right.
Couple of comments? Not questions, I had comments.
Safety is not too related to that, to the conversation.
So we're taking comments on Isquahobart Road, whatever part of it you like.
Well, I've lived at the corner of May Valley Road, Hobart Road since '77. I guess that computes the 40 years. A couple of comments. I agree with almost everything the audience has said. I just wanted to add, is there any way, you have any input about the safety of the traffic at that intersection? It's just atrocious. I mean, you can talk about the backups and everything, and I agree with all the data. But these, what do you call them, dual haul, is that the word? The dirt haulers with a trailer? Just recently, within the last two days, I had a conversation with my neighbor, who is a longtime construction person, had his own company, and he's intimately aware or knowledgeable about these dual haul things. And a couple of things I've noticed, right in the immediate area, I'm kind of rambling, but I don't understand why the load limit signs on the two bridges, 15 Mile and Issaquah Creek Bridges on May Valley Road, have disappeared. He was telling me that previously, a year or two ago, the limit on the 15 Mile Bridge was 35,000 or 35 to 40,000, somewhere in there. Now there's no sign. But his best calculations, one truck with the trailer is over 100,000. And they're going up and down that road, which everybody's verified the volume or the numbers. It's unbelievable. Then when you get to the intersection, if you're eastbound, wanting to make a right turn to go to the landfill at, it's right there, the old sand and gravel up there on the Cedar Grove, by the Cedar Grove landfill and the Cedar Grove composting. Anyway, for lack of the accurate name of the sand and gravel company, they've been hauling out of there for 45, 50 years. And they're going to have to fill that all in, and what the regulations are, I don't know. But those trucks are going to be going down that road, since they can't go through Issaquah for the next 10, 15 years. And I don't know if that's computed into this data or not, but when they come to that intersection, and I'm kind of rambling here, but, and they want to make a right turn, they do one of three things. They stay in the proper lane, the right-turn lane, and drag the trailer across the sidewalk, almost hitting the post, and then they take up the northbound left-turn lane on the Isquahobart Road to make that corner. The other alternative is they kind of plug up both lanes, and then they don't drag the trailer across the sidewalk. They just barely impede on the left-hand, northbound left-hand turn lane of the Isquahobart Road. The third thing they do is take up the whole left-turn lane, and then they can make the right turn from the left-turn lane to go southbound again. And I saw so many close calls, smaller cars are in the right-turn lane to go south in the evening, and they can't see the right-turn signal light from the truck, because they're either behind it, beside it, and the signal light is way the hell up there. And these trucks just toot their horn and go right over the top of them. And I don't expect anybody here to do anything about it, but is there any contacts that you have with the county? I never see a patrol car out there. And I thought for CDL license, you had to read, but they can't read "No Jake Brake" sign. But that's about all I got.
Thank you very much. All right, that's it for public comment? Okay, Mary Lou, you said you had one last comment you wanted to add.
I had a couple of comments. I'm done with questions, but I wanted to hear from the public before I finished my comments. So I like the data that was collected. I guess that what I struggle with greatly here is what to do with the data. So Isquahobart Road, south of town, is classified by King County as a recreational corridor. It is not a throughway. It is not a connector from one urban area to another. It is a recreational corridor, that's what they call it. Just because the cars are there now, it sounds like we have our head down, and we're looking at the data and saying, the cars will stay, we just need to figure out how to make them move more efficiently or safely. And I have, I have huge issues with that. I did love what Chad said about priority projects. That's what I've heard from the cities in the south as well, that they're wanting us to join them on advocating for priority projects such as 167 or 169 and 18, the Cloverleaf, and 18, the highway. So I'm glad that Bill brought up the part about the other cities and that we'll be looping them in somehow. I guess, Fay, I had a concern that when we look at the section of this road that's in Issaquah, I really believe that commuters, which seems like that could be over 80% of the traffic on Isquahobart Road, really ought to be on commuter routes. And Front Street is not a commuter route. And so when we look at these two pieces together and say, we have to get cars from 18 to 90, I think we're making a huge mistake. I thought what this study might do is look at other options to put them on commuter routes, such as, maybe there's a roundabout at May Valley Road, and traffic is put behind Squawk Mountain instead of through town. It goes behind Squawk Mountain, it goes on SR-900. But to look at this as we should actually tweak a local arterial to handle commuter traffic, that just, it looks to me, on some of the potential projects, that that's where we're going. I think the most disturbing thing of all is that the quality of life for the residents in the Isquahobart Valley and those Isquah residents who live south of Sunset is terrible. It's terrible and getting worse, and I'm not sure that just putting in a few roundabouts is really going to improve their quality of life. So I'm a little discouraged at this point in time with what we're doing. I think the last gentleman who got up and talked about truck routes made it really obvious that one of the things we ought to be looking at working with the county on is getting the trucks to go a different way, if that is what is causing a significant portion of it. And I think that's it. But my biggest concern is that it looks to me like we're memorializing the traffic that already passes through town. We're just trying to find some tweaks, and we're leaving it there. And I think commuter traffic ought to be on commuter routes, and Front Street is not a commuter route for the rest of the region. It's a local arterial street, two lanes. It's probably always going to be that way. Those are my comments.
Paul, last comment?
Have you given any thought to King County doing something similar to what we just did? Obviously, you know, here in the city of Issaquah, we have our priorities, but this data is all of ours, including the county's. And these folks, you know, came to a City of Issaquah meeting, but where are the elected representatives in the county and the officials in transportation and those? I mean, if, we should be suggesting to them, and you guys should be asking for them to hold a similar form to, so rather than just us, those who do represent you legislatively, and then the administration can hear your input as well, we should, we can help convene that.
End of set topic for the evening. We'll wait to hear back what comes forward after that, and we'll be, and you took a lot of comments from us, I think, so we'll add that to that, to the record. Thank you all for attending. All right. Next topic is Solid Waste Collection Contract Review with Micah Monkowski. I know David, you with him as well?
I'm going to be leading some of them.
All right.
Are we going to see any heat maps in this presentation?
Come on, from compost, you get a lot of heat. Out of here? No? Okay. I don't think so. Okay.
Does everybody have a copy of the memo?
Yep.
Yes.
It's in the packet.
Oh, okay. Not wait for...
No, we're going to wait for, she leaves, that's...
Okay. So we haven't talked about solid waste for some time with this committee. I think the last time was the rate increase from the county last November. So I wanted to update the council and provide a teaser of some important items that'll be coming to you over the next several months. The solid waste contract for the city is currently held by Recology and began in July of 2012 with an expiration of June of 2019. We also have two two-year extension options. City goals for the contract are to have high-quality customer service, innovative approaches that help us achieve our diversion and waste reduction goals, and to return a good value to the customers, which are the city residents and businesses. 2019 may seem a long ways off, but we've begun the process to determine if it will be beneficial to go through a contract procurement process in 2018 or to renegotiate an extension with Recology. What we're doing so far, we're currently collecting data on a few fronts to help us make this determination. We're collecting a customer satisfaction survey that'll go out in October, both on phone and online. We'll compare the results to past customer satisfaction surveys to determine if a high level of customer satisfaction is being achieved. And in the past, these surveys have shown very high levels of satisfaction with the haulers that we've had. We're also conducting a rate comparison analysis to see where our rates stand in relation to several other cities around us. The caveat with this type of study is that rates aren't directly comparable, because each contract offers a different mix of services and also has different operational costs, such as distance to the transfer station for the hauler and distance between houses, et cetera. But it can give us kind of a general picture of where we stand in comparison generally for our customers. We'll also be updating a City of Kirkland study that they conducted last year that compared several recent local contract procurement processes to show which type of process, bid renegotiation or RFP resulted in increase or decrease in rates. And in November, we'll be presenting the findings from this rate study and from the customer satisfaction survey to the council work session. In November and December, OS and the administration will use the results and review our current contract and other recent contracts to see if there's any additions or new innovative services that we'd like to add or changes that we would like to make that would help us reach our goals. And we also fully expect Recology to propose an extension, which we'll evaluate along with all the other data. And then in January, the administration will make a recommendation to extend or to begin a procurement process based on all of that information that we collected. On the second page of the memo is the projected timeline for an RFP process, and this could change if we opt to do a bid or if we opt to renegotiate. We're planning to keep CIC updated regularly throughout any process that we have. Also, coming up next, in October, there will be another small CIP rate increase that I'll be bringing to you. I don't have the numbers for that yet, but that'll be coming up. And then...
That was part of the contract, existing contract?
Correct. It's 100% CIP on the operational portion of the rate. CPI, sorry, CIP. And this year, the CPI, I believe, is 3.17%, so that'll be on just the service portion of the rate. Next year also, the King County Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan Update should have a draft that'll start to go through the adoption process for the cities that we'll be bringing to council. Any questions?
No, no questions at all? Come on.
Right, just did such a good job explaining it.
Yeah, actually, that's nice. I mean, to tell us this far ahead of time, I appreciate that. And the process and the consideration of, you know, two-year extensions, full, you know, re-bid out or whatever kind of thing. It's nice to, I've been looking forward to hear what Kirkland says. And know what the customer satisfaction survey says, as well as a rate comparison. So, it'd be nice to know. So, we'll wait for that in a few months.
In November, yep.
Yep, November. Great.
Yep.
Take care of this topic. All right. We're good. Thank you very much. That was quick and complete and excellent.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to our next topic. Sheldon, you're up with the, and that was informational, AB 7469 franchise agreement with Clear Wireless LLC. This is an action item.
Thank you. This is a standard franchise agreement for telecommunications companies. Clear Wireless needed to renew their existing franchise with us. And so, we worked with the city attorney's office to update all the language in the franchise agreement and so forth to allow them continued operations within our rights of way. The term of the agreement is for 10 years upon authorization and execution of the franchise agreement. And I guess if there's any questions, it's a standard franchise agreement, has the requirements for permitting and everything else that they have to abide by still in the municipal code. If there's any specific questions, I'm happy to respond to them.
Any questions?
If you have specific information or general either is fine. We have a number, how many different franchise agreements do we have?
We have approximately somewhere around a dozen, I believe.
And that are all telecommunications?
No, they vary. I mean, there's PSC for its electric and gas. There's...
So, this is telecommunications?
A number of, there's a number, more telecommunications than other.
Right. And is there anything in these agreements or that, so that's, the fee for them to apply here is pretty low. It's a great opportunity to give them access to our market, for all of them, not just picking on Clear Wireless. And what is, other than the services that they provide, of course, for a fee, what is, what are the, what public benefit do we get in allowing these franchise agreements?
It's service to your citizens for what they provide, for whatever it is. I mean, some facilities are...
They're offering of their service to the citizens?
Or in some way, shape, or form, there's probably some services they provide. Maybe they're providing a fiber network for carrying Comcast signals. I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, they have a lot of service that they provide that trickles down, maybe. I don't believe they're direct service providers...
Right, right.
...in the community. But they provide networking and things like that for fiber access and...
Right. And then, and they get paid for all, everything that they do.
Right, right.
They get paid for it. And we're giving, with these agreements, to all of them, we're giving them access, you know, to our market.
Right.
And so, this is perhaps a conversation for another time, but it seems, I do know, especially in the area of telecommunications, there's many municipalities across the country that, that, you know, drive a little bit of a harder bargain with these guys and try to get some public benefit out of the right for access to the market. And for, and just, if you look at telecommunications in general, or maybe cable more specifically, just the idea of, you know, public access channels, cable channels for, we have our own government. We, I know, I'm not sure how we get up with Comcast, but there's also, you know, public access channels, there's education channels, and these can be funded by these type of franchise agreements, by giving people access to the market.
So, telecommunications is different than the franchises by law.
Okay.
And so, the cable franchises, yes, you can negotiate things like you're speaking about.
Okay.
But on telecommunications, you are not allowed to.
Okay, all right.
By law. They're very specifically written and it comes from the federal and then it gets embedded in the RCWs.
Okay.
And you can't negotiate those sorts of things. You can have a fee for the application for the franchise. You can't charge them an annual fee or negotiate something else. You can require them to pay the cost it took to negotiate it. For instance, Clear Wireless paid the city to pay Ogden Murphy their costs. So, there was no out-of-pocket and they paid our permit fees on top of that to access it. Now, whenever they do construction in the city, yes, they have to go through our permit process and pay the permit fees and things like that. But the laws don't allow you in telecommunications franchises to charge a fee.
Okay, so, again...
Or to negotiate services.
Larger conversation, but I just, I thank you for that clarification, especially on the cable side, I think.
Yeah, it's two different things.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Mary Lou?
So, Sheldon, I sent you two different kinds of questions. And they were more general about franchise agreements and not so much specifically about Clear Wireless. But the two examples I sent you were where we do franchise agreements with PSC and Comcast?
Yes.
Is there a way to put in protections to deal with the two issues that I talked to you about today? One is where PSC actually can tell a homeowner to, they want to move out of the city's right-of-way and move on to private property for, not for home service, but for heater lines. Can that be written to a franchise agreement so that that can't be done by somebody? Because that seems to me like a real, real overreach. And then the second question was about upgrading, where Comcast can request that a property owner who is required to underground Comcast, the main line in front of two lots would be required to upgrade an entire street, even that that is above ground on the cable. Can those kinds of protections for development be written into our franchise agreements? Because they seem abusive.
Okay, so, the first one is...
PSC.
PSC and the ability for PSC to, I'm going to probably change the words here a little bit.
Sure.
Require a property owner to grant an easement for them to take their transmission lines and move them on to private property.
Out of the right-of-way and onto private property.
PSC has, does not have the right to take property rights without compensation. So, they can request an easement from the property owner, but they cannot require the property owner to give it to them.
Well, they can, because then they say you don't get the power.
They legally cannot. I spoke to this, to the attorney today.
Oh, okay, okay.
And they do have the powers of condemnation, but under condemnation, you still have to pay the fair market value for the land and the easements.
Why would they want to do it if they can use the franchise agreement to keep the line in the city?
The reason why they don't like to be in the city's right-of-way is because if the city has an improvement in the future...
They have to move.
They have, and it's in the way.
Okay.
It's their cost to move it.
Okay, interesting.
So, they are trying their best to get out of the right-of-way.
Okay.
But from a property rights perspective, they cannot demand...
That's, that makes sense. So, then, that kind of protection, I'll step away from that one. So, if you have Comcast's request, which is to upgrade an entire street to service two lots, is that not covered under a franchise agreement? The city's franchise agreement with Comcast?
Wasn't clear on what you meant by upgrade the whole system. I read it as require the property owner to pay for undergrounding of the private service.
No. Pay for undergrounding of the service, of everybody's service line and as it goes back up the pole line, upgrade it all the way down the pole line to the end of the street in order to get service to one house. And again, is that, is that something a franchise agreement would prohibit? Because we, we, the city, are allowing them into the right-of-way to do that. Is that something a franchise, language in a franchise?
If it's required to provide the requested service, the private property owner would have to pay for that.
It's an upgrade for the entire...
I know it, but if you're talking about the transmission...
Transmission.
Line itself.
Yep.
If the property owner has requested a certain service, i.e., a developer has requested a certain service for their property, then, and to get that there, Comcast has the right to say, "Well, you have to pay for everything it takes to provide you that service that the developer has requested."
Yes, sort of. Not really. Maybe I'll put the question in writing and let you ask, because my question just was, if we use standard franchise agreements and there are things in each one we're not doing that we should be doing to protect, are these things we can address in any of our standard language? But I think the question's too confusing tonight. I think what's better is I'll write it up for you.
Yeah.
You can send it to legal and say, "Is this legal under?" And if not, I guess my question is, do we have all of the protections we want in our standard language? And it sounds like tonight you're saying yes, and I'll just explain the other one differently.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I had no questions on the rest of it.
All right. You good, Paul? All right, so, just a re-statement. This is a renewal of an existing agreement.
Yes.
And we're updating the contract to have...
Current language.
Current language versus old language. And it's pretty standard.
It is.
It's pretty standard. And what they have, they already have, it's just a 10-year renewal and another 10 years we have to deal with it again.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. And those are good questions, Mary Lou. Hopefully, we'll get them answered, because that's interesting.
We'll get an answer.
Yeah, we'll get an answer on that offline here a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, this is an action item. So, we need to send this back to the council.
Do renewals typically go on consent?
Yeah, so, I was just looking here. We're looking to refer it to the full council on October 2nd. And first of all, is, are we in agreement to send it forward to the council? All agreed with that? And is consent okay? I think consent's okay with me.
It's okay with me.
All right. So, return to full council on October 2nd on consent calendar. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. Next item is AB 7468, here in a local agreement with the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District for adjusted sewer service area. This is, again, an action item. We'll be looking to move to council if we agree. And I had some questions when we talked about this earlier, so let's see what you have now.
Okay, great. You're correct. This agenda bill, number 7468, is a request for council's consideration to adjust the boundary of its sanitary sewer service area to allow the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District to provide service within a very specific area of Isaguah, where the service provision by the city of Isaguah would require a pump station and be more costly to both the city and its retail sewer customers if it was to maintain the service area itself. Whereas the Spanish Plateau has facilities close by, has an adjoining service area right there, and they can provide it more cost-effectively. I'm going to use the GAS viewer from the city of Isaguah to walk you through a little bit more. The graphic in the agenda bill had a blue box area located right here, and it's shown as a blue dash on this graphic on the screen. I-90 runs through here and north is to the top of the page. We have Northeast Locust right here. We have Northeast Juniper here. The city's public workshop is right here in this area. And the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District sewer service boundary area is shaded in this kind of off-gray, green color. And you'll notice their sewer service area boundary runs and is bounded by the, on the southern side, by Northeast Locust. The area that we're talking about is, again, back in here in this dashed box area. The city's sewer system picks up all of these properties here and runs gravity down this way across I-90 and up Gilman Boulevard into the metro system. Okay? Due to the topography and the depth of the actual sewer through here, which we can't change the depth because then the sewer won't run, won't flow, it would require anybody in this box area to pump sewage to our manhole somewhere in here. To do that, we would have to build a public pump station to collect all the sewage in this area and then pump once, because you don't want to have a lot of little small lines in the roadway and things like that. You start to think about managing the system. Mechanical systems are subject to failure. They cost more to maintain. At the end of the day, your utility would still have to replace it when it wears out. Whereas the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District has a manhole located right here at the intersection of Northeast Locust and First Avenue. That manhole can, this whole area can be collected through a gravity drain line that goes along the north side of Juniper, the east side of First Avenue, and ties into their manhole. The properties can then tie into that gravity line and provide gravity sewer service for their entire service. More cost-effective for everybody. Even with that, though, there's a need to have some properties, like the very low-lying ones here, to use little private grinder side sewers, which are small pressure side sewers. But we have those in town, too. But at least it's not, you know, it's, the public sewer is gravity, which means it results in lower cost for the agencies and lower cost for the customer at the end of the day. So, that is why the recommendation is to allow that small area to go into the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District service area. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, and just one clarification, I think you talked to me earlier about, this isn't a unique thing. We have a number of places where we kind of trade back and forth with them on doing this, where it's because it's more efficient for both of us to do gravity than pumping.
We have an arrangement with Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District, but it, but the boundary is actually overlapped already. For instance, up in the area of the polygon, it's just off the map here on the right-hand side, Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District is providing the sewer service to the area and we're providing water service to those apartments within the Isaguah, well, actually, it's within the Lakeside Development Agreement area.
So, this is, this is a common thing to cross there, whoever can do it best?
We try and work that way so that, you know, whoever can do it best. And I received an email today from Jay Reagan Strife of Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District, and their board took action on this agreement on Monday and approved the agreement. So, it's subject to your guys' review and approval or not.
Questions? Mary Lou?
Sure. A comment and a question. That figure helped a lot in order to see where it is. That was great. The sewer rates, then, for our residents or businesses are similar between the two?
They're comparable.
Okay. There's not a huge difference.
There's probably a difference, but I don't know the exact amount.
Paul, anything?
So, there's a, there's a, sorry about that. Somebody's doing a project in that. What initiated this change?
Okay, so, you're right. There is a proposed development in the area, and it is an Evergreen Ford Detail Shop. I believe it's on this lot and this lot. These two lots right now are being proposed for a detail shop from, for Evergreen Ford.
Okay. And it has to be on sewer?
Yes.
Will the other property owners in the area be required to connect to that sewer?
At redevelopment, they would be.
Only redevelopment?
Redevelopment. And then, per Isaguah code, if their septic's fail, not just Isaguah would require it, but the Health Department would also require it.
Because it's available.
Because it's available. Now, chances are, what's going to occur is, is that initially, you will see a gravity public sewer that'll run from the district down to about right here. And then, as other properties redevelop in this area, then the sewer will extend further in there. Evergreen's not going to extend it all the way to the end of Juniper Street. They're just going to bring it to...
Okay.
Their property. They're just going to bring it to their property.
Okay. All right, that actually answered where it was, where it was going. I was wondering how extensive their, the installation of their infrastructure would be? And it would be just as far as to serve the project that's being done?
Probably across their frontage, to their property, and then across their frontage, probably.
Okay. And that property owner is responsible for all those costs?
Yes. And there's probably, because there's a certain, there's a piece of property here that's not owned by the developer. It's owned by somebody else. They'll probably have a latecomer agreement against the infrastructure so that when they redevelop or need the sewer, they'd have to pay their share of, back to Evergreen Ford.
We vacated a street section in that area not long ago. Is that part of this? Is that, is that the development area?
I'm not aware of vacating a street section in here.
Um, yeah.
Oh, yes, we did. There was a section of Northeast Locust, I think. No, no, it was right here where this property line runs like this. That was a piece of right-of-way, but that was vacated.
Okay, okay, so that wasn't, okay.
Yes, that was not, that was not.
It was already in their service area, anyway.
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay, so other properties, unless they redevelop, don't have to do any, make any change. We know that there are septic systems in that area. We also know the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District owns some of that land. As a matter of fact, they have a well there.
That's correct. They have a well there.
Okay. All right, well, and I appreciate the bill how it actually includes information from our comprehensive plan. You put it in there, you know, about our policy to provide, you know, direct service to all our cities within a limit. So I think, I read this, you having that in there is like, you know, we do have a, our comprehensive plan does kind of cover this type of thing, but it's like we are, well, I guess you're saying that in this case, the sewer system plan is, we're kind of using that one comment you have in here, work with other sewer providers to ensure adequate provision and maintenance of sewer facilities for properties not served by the city. So I guess I'm just, was, you put that in there, you're just trying to show we're actually going against our stated policy because none of this really seems to reinforce what we're doing.
You do have a long-term policy of being the direct service provider. Okay. Short of going through an arduous process, which we've already agreed with the district not to embark on for a number of years, the utility also has in there the language to cooperate and coordinate with other utilities to provide service. And so you are providing the service, you're just not the direct provider at this time, and you're looking at it in a long-term aspect of what's the most cost-effective way of doing it. Let's say 15 years from now, the city does assume that portion of the district. The question, you know, the city would be, would you want to have a pump station there that you'd have to replace with gravity, or would you rather have, assume a gravity system at the same time? So you're starting to look more forward, but you're recognizing that you have some, some policies here. It's not saying one trumps the other, though.
Okay, well, it, it, there is some irony to this, but because it is kind of the very reverse.
It is.
And it's portion, they're assuming part of us. But I think the economics of it makes sense, makes sense to us, our citizens, our city, and to honestly, the, you know, the property owners in this section. Because when and if they ever redevelop and need to hook up the sewer, they actually would be connecting into a lower-cost solution than what we could provide.
Right. And in the long term, you assume a lower-cost maintenance system.
Yeah.
So in the long term, you're also looking after your own.
Gravity's cheaper than mechanical?
Pardon?
Gravity doesn't wear out.
Right.
You don't have to replace it or maintain it.
Well, we line it after about 80, 90 years. But it beats replacing mechanical every 25 to 30.
I understand the concept of what you're trying to do. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. So one last, just a question. To our residents in that area, so they would get a bill from Spanish Plateau for sewer and water from us, so there'd be a separate building, they wouldn't bill for that?
That's correct. There's a coordination effort between the city's billing system for water reeds and things like that, and they would receive the sewer bill from the Spanish Plateau. Those that are hooked up, at least.
Right. Yeah. Okay. No more questions? Okay. So our proposal is to move this to full council on October 2nd? Are we all in agreement on doing that?
Yep.
Okay. And we're good for consent as well?
Yep.
All righty.
Okay, next item.
Is AB 7463, Washington State Department of Transportation Right-of-Way Easement Request for Maintenance Purposes, portion of Northeast Gilman Boulevard. Again, an action item. And Sheldon, you're still up.
Okay, so this item is asking council's consideration to grant Washington State Department of Transportation an easement for maintenance and access purposes for continued access and ability to maintain some facilities they have at the edge of the I-90 limited access, i.e. some retaining walls that help support the Sunset Interchange Flyover Ramp. This action was, came about because the city received a request from a property owner to vacate a section of Northeast Gilman Boulevard located in the area where the cursor is, right here at the end of Third Avenue Northeast as it extends into this development right in here where the old bowling alley used to be and where the big American flag is today. And with the vacation of this right-of-way in here, if the city were to have vacated it without reserving an easement for WashDOT, WashDOT wouldn't have rights to be able to get in and inspect their retaining wall and do what they need to do to maintain it, should maintenance be necessary at any given time. And so what we did before, we told the property owner before the city could even move forward with consideration of vacating that, at the, we needed to make sure that WashDOT had what they needed. And so this is the first action associated with that request that hasn't yet come before the council. WashDOT and the city worked together to define what they needed. WashDOT actually wrote the legal description for it. And we are asking that the council grant the easement for maintenance and access purposes over the current right-of-way that we, that the city has been requested to vacate. If the council authorizes this easement, then a future agenda bill will come forward with a request for council's consideration to vacate the right-of-way to the property owner as requested. That's the background and why this agenda bill is in front of council.
So to sum that up, we currently have it with the property owner. They want to get rid of it with us, so we're getting it with WashDOT. So basically, trading us having it to WashDOT having it so they have access to their area.
Well, WashDOT is only going to, now, the, the easement will be a real property easement that the city is granting to WashDOT over the city's right-of-way. The entire right-of-way, including that portion which will have the easement, will be granted, would be granted if the council so chooses, to the property owner. And so the property owner becomes responsible for everything, and essentially, WashDOT would then have an easement over that right-of-way as a, pardon?
If you vacate.
Yeah, if you vacate. WashDOT would have an easement over the property as just normal real estate.
And we have no need for this, as of what we're saying at this point. There's no need for us to keep this.
There's no need for us to keep this little section. There's nothing there but private land.
Questions?
Just one, I guess. So Sheldon, WashDOT didn't need the easement before because we owned the whole right-of-way and we just let them?
That's correct. Because it's a public road, they had access.
Anyway, okay.
That was my only question I had as well.
All right. So the proposal for this action again is to return it to council on October 2nd. We in agreement with doing that?
Sure.
And on consent?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, actually, just a second. Do we, Sheldon, do we typically do these kinds of easements or land things on consent or not? I don't remember.
If there are no issues with them, they've gone back on consent.
Okay.
I'm okay. You still okay with consent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Okay. Having that, that kind of concludes our action items, leaving us with our project updates.
So typically, we've, as in the past, we've prepared a spreadsheet with updates to projects and the like, and Kurt and I are both here, and I think Kurt may have some that he'd like to highlight for you. And then if there's questions, one or both of us can answer them.
Okay. So I've got a question. I was asking for photos tonight, but it sounds like we didn't get them, or did we?
No. Oh, there are some photos in the file. I can pull them up. Just a moment.
Okay. So I was just looking for, particularly on our couple of main ones that are under construction right now, if you had anything for like Anti-Aircraft Creek and Maple, Maple Street Roundabout.
They should be on there.
Yeah, one moment, I'll pull them up.
Okay, great. All right. Okay. While he's pulling them up, Kurt, do you want to start talking about anything in particular or go down our list?
Well, you know, this list is primarily for you, and if, we're certainly happy to go into a bit more detail on any of the projects that you'd like. We do have some pictures. As you asked, if we could talk a little bit about Anti-Aircraft Creek and, so there's, we're making really good progress on Anti-Aircraft Creek. Sheldon's perhaps a bit more the technical expert on what's going on out there, but the good news is we're working closely with the neighborhood. We are addressing their issues. We're maintaining a safe road, and we are anticipating being complete with this project. I'm looking at Sheldon here, I believe, by the end of next week.
Substantially complete?
Right, substantially complete by the end of next week, and then by mid-October, all the plantings and so forth should be done.
Essentially complete in the middle of October?
Yeah, mid to late October, essentially complete. And we have closeout and punchless items and stuff like that.
This is Anti-Aircraft Creek?
With Anti-Aircraft. That's one picture of Anti-Aircraft. There's another picture, just, you know, work in progress. Let's see, there's a third one, shows the inside of the culvert for Fish Passage. So we're just, those were the three pictures from Anti-Aircraft.
I have a question on Anti-Aircraft.
Thank you.
Sure.
So there has been some recent correspondence from a couple of the residents along Newport Way because Newport Way still has that rural county road feeling, and that because this necessitated moving it over and having different travel lanes than where they normally are, there was concerns about weekends, you know, the, either the markings not being bright enough or the cones not being out. How do we deal with that?
Okay, so there was some concerns over the past weekend about some of the traffic cones being knocked down.
Lighting.
The lane markings for, you know, and the narrowness of the temporary pedestrian pathway and so forth. And we typically do go out and check at the end of the day to make sure that all the traffic control devices are in place. I know when we got back in Monday morning, first thing, we saw the emails and so forth, and the guys were out immediately putting the cones back, enhancing some of the markings, things like that.
Their guys were back? Their guys did it, or our guys did it?
We got the contractor.
The contractor.
Working on it. And then there is a 24-hour call number that anybody can call, and it's the dispatch. Well, what they do is they call dispatch.
Okay.
And that's 837-3221. And dispatch will get in contact with the city's on-call person, and then that on-call person has the 24-hour call numbers for the contractor and others. There's, it's just a process to go through to get to it, but we do have the ability to do that.
So the couple of, okay. The couple of letters that were written, we haven't seen the answer yet. That's the answer? They'll get those so that they're aware there's a 24-hour calling?
That is part of the response.
Okay, that's a part of the response. Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. Great. All right, that gets us through probably Stormwater ones and into transportation.
So we have some pictures. Sheldon's going to pull those up for Maple Roundabout. So we're making, we're making good progress on this, on this project. I believe we're still on schedule to open the, open the street to traffic starting tomorrow, so that's ahead of schedule. We talked about the holiday season, so we're well ahead of that. We talked, so, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good project. I think it turned out well. I think it will, there's, there it is, under construction a few weeks ago. And I think it's an example, we had a good contractor, they do good work. It's an example of a project that we've stayed ahead of schedule and on budget, and I think it's an example of something we've done well. So there's still a few things, it's, so although it'll be open tomorrow, it's still lacking a few things. Most noticeably, the RRFBs, the flashing beacons, so those will be installed here within the next few weeks, but other than that, I think we're good to go. We've been working closely with the property owners, especially the Madison Marquette and Target, to keep them involved in this process, and it's, it's worked well. It's, it was, we weren't quite sure about how successful the full road closure would be with these, with the neighboring businesses, but it doesn't seem to cause any great problem. And it did give us a real advantage in being able to complete the work in a, in a more timely way. So we appreciate everyone's cooperation on that.
Great. I have a question. We talked about this earlier, about truck traffic in and out of, particularly Trader Joe's. And so since obviously, they've been having to use a different route these last three weeks or so, have we worked with them to continue them using a different route versus trying to come through this?
So, yeah, so the short answer is, short answer that, yes, is we are continuing to work with Trader Joe's, Target, and others to encourage them to continue doing that. So from a, from a regulatory standpoint, I'm not sure that we're, we're there yet in terms of how we would require that. We certainly are encouraging their cooperation to do that, and we know that they were able to get trucks in and out of there just fine with the road closed, and we are working with them closely to encourage them to continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on?
Yeah, real quick. So the, so the flashing beacons have to go in, you said a few weeks. Is there any other signage that's going to go up, especially on the roundabout itself?
I don't.
I would expect there would be some advanced signage as you approach. This picture doesn't show it.
There will be some, some advanced signage. I'm not sure that there's signage on the roundabout itself. That's intentional because we didn't want to have something out there that people would hit.
Right, okay, okay. Because there's nothing there now, I just wanted, because it is very non-distant.
So we're not done with the markings and the signage, and there'll be signs for the crosswalks and so forth. So, so you're right. There's some, some final pieces of signage and markings that need to be done, but I think the bulk of the, the hardscape is complete.
We need big Centralist cross sculpture.
And we have that.
Welcome to Centralist.
And we have that center for that, presumably, potentially.
We have room for that in the future.
Right. That's maybe a conversation for another day.
Thank you. This is looking good, and then we'll have to see how everybody learns to function around it with the new, new patterns.
Yeah, I mean, the whole purpose, as you all know, is to provide more positive guidance, both to drivers and to pedestrians, and we, we think it does that.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for the update on that one. I have a question on one, it's not highlighted here, someone bringing up. on one. It's not highlighted here, someone brought it up. Um, the WashDOT Fish Passage on East Lakes of Mames.
Yes.
Um, as I was walking that the other day, on the east side, is you're there, okay? The sidewalk there has a concrete curb, and the rest is blacktop. It doesn't have concrete sidewalk, it has a blacktop sidewalk. Is that temporary, or is that, you, we letting them give us a blacktop sidewalk?
The, okay, so the, WashDOT had planned to replace their sidewalk and so forth in kind with what was there before. Prior to the project, it was asphalt. Uh, and so I've been working with WashDOT to see if I can get them to change that to concrete, uh, but I'm not sure that they're going to want to do that, because it's a cost issue for WashDOT. Uh, and the, uh, practical design, according to the WashDOT email I got, you know, is replacing kind so that they're not increasing costs. Uh, but they've been informed that that's city standard is to have it concrete, but I'm trying to work with them to get concrete out of it.
I encourage that, because we would have to replace with concrete, and I'm understanding kind stuff, but-
It's theirs.
It's theirs. It's unlimited access, and legally, they're not required to abide by your codes, because it's limited access. But we're trying to work with them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone bring that up? Okay, what other ones? Um, go ahead.
I'm gonna-
I think Paul's got one.
Paul.
So I read the report on the pinch point, and it's still, it, it seems like the, you know, we're, we're gonna talk to FHWA, has been kind of out there for a while. Um, we, do we have a date?
No, I don't have a date on that. Uh-
Because that has basically been the message for quite a few months now.
Yeah, it has, and that, I don't have a date yet from WashDOT when they're gonna be approaching FHWA on it. I think they're still getting design data and other data before they approach it. Uh, from what I've heard, that they had internal conversations, and they look like at WashDOT, they can support it.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it's just, you know, they need to get their ducks in a row before they go to FHWA.
So all of that has remained the same for a couple of months now?
Yes.
And it would be, boy, it would be good to have some date out there. I mean, when, when is this conversation gonna happen?
I'll, I'll talk with WashDOT, see if I can get a date out of it.
Go ahead.
Question on the same one. So I happened to bump into Mark Mullitt like two weeks ago, I think it was, and we were talking about a bunch of projects. We talked about the pinch point project, and, um, his comments were about shoulder hardening and about a potential sound wall. When I asked him about the progress of this FHWA question about getting access to their right-of-way to build the sidewalk, he didn't realize that was one of our asks. Somehow, he's a little bit out of the loop on that. So it would probably be good to close the loop with him and make sure he's, his comments to me were, they're going to get their number-one wish, which is a sound wall, and I went, I think that, that's a wish. I don't know if it's number one, but definitely the sidewalk is. So we maybe get to touch base with him a bit about that.
Yeah, I know that WashDOT's integrating that, our ask-
Yes.
-with their sound wall.
Yes, and he was focused on the sound wall.
Is what they're doing, and so-
He didn't know we were asking for the other part, so it'd be good to get him in-
I can, I can make sure Mr. Mullitt's aware of it.
That's great.
Great. Thank you for catching that. Um, just, uh, when I, on Newport Way, SR 900 to 54th?
Yes.
Um, just, you don't have in there that you're applying for a grant?
We'll update that with, as we are, as of yesterday, we applied for the grant.
Okay.
More to come on that.
More to come on that. So that's just an update to have in there?
And I did one I, I forgot to mention, but just so you all know, one of our complete streets projects is to rebuild the, basically the intersection and crosswalks and rapid flashing beacons in front of City Hall right here, right across the street. And, um, that's still our plan to do that, and schedule-wise, it was, it was looking like it would be either right prior to Salmon Days or after Salmon Days. So we have, um, made the decision to start that work after Salmon Days, which we think is probably the best way to go on that. So there won't be any, there won't be any work out there in the street until sometime after Salmon, shortly after Salmon Days. So just so everyone knows about that.
Okay. Um, the other one was second-in-Sunset signalization. I know it's not quite ours, but we have a goal to turn that on before Salmon Days, and it's been sitting for a while, it looks like, so.
They do, and I saw some emails today where I believe it's supposed to be turned on by September 28th, I think, and they have some lane closures that they're gonna be doing this weekend on the 23rd, specifically to provide striping and the like. And so once the striping's done, and then they have a couple of other items to do, and they expect to have it tested and turning on, I believe on the 28th, I think was the date, if I remember the email correctly.
And just a reminder to me, this project was due before school started in 2016, and then before school started in 2017, and now we're before Salmon Days in 2017. So this has been, uh, interesting on the timing. All right. Uh, last one. Um, update Shangri-La Talus, reconstruction. They talked to you about substanti- you just completed roadway work and substantial completion expected by mid-October. Anything on that one?
Yeah, we have some photographs.
Yes.
Of it. That's, uh, water valves that are being lowered into the hole.
That's a cheap one.
Yeah.
That's a valve.
Give you a scale of some of the utilities that are under that intersection a little bit, and then-
You can, you can just arrow down. When you're in the viewer, you can just hit your arrow key.
Yeah, and then there's a view of the installation of the below-ground wall, if you recall that effort. They're lowering a piece of wide flange I-beam down the hole, and then the hole got filled with concrete. That's what's, you know, supporting your infrastructure or preventing the, protecting the infrastructure, I should say, uh, from land movement in the future.
Are those complete?
Those are complete.
Good.
Uh, and let's see, there's one more photograph here. And that's just another picture of them drilling out the large diameter caisson piling. There, you can see the steel I-beam down in the hole here. They're drilling out this one, and when that one's done, they take another piece of steel and they'll put it in that hole, fill it with concrete. But those are done, those are completed. Uh, and I believe they're working to finish the curb gutter sidewalk and actually road surfacing. Uh, and hopefully, I believe it was in October, it was gonna be completed.
So there are gaps between those? There's, it's not a solid wall?
Yeah, there, there's spaces between. It's not a solid wall. It's dependent upon soil properties to actually bridge a little bit between the, the, uh, the piling, and that's a common, uh, method of stabilization. We actually used that back in the early 1990s when we had a slide up on Forest Rim, uh, in one of the tight, uh, switchbacks. We had a landslide occur up there, and we actually used the same, same methodology. We've put them piling in, spaced them about four feet apart. That, uh, slide area's been stable ever since.
All right. Any other questions on project updates? On the public comments on project updates? Didn't forget you this time there. Behind me, I didn't see-
I just wanted to say, as far as, we were never given an after-hours phone number to call with concerns on Anti-Aircraft Creek. So we didn't know who to call. Uh, we, you know, could've called the police, but we don't get a really good response unless it's an emergency. So having that would have been nice. I would like to also see that the city does set up some standards, uh, for separation of traffic from pedestrians. Uh, cones are really not appropriate, especially when you have abruptment, abrupt edge to the lane. If any of those tires would've gone off there, and some, they would've, the cones would've done nothing for the pedestrians, or do do nothing for the pedestrians. I do see now over on Seventh, uh, with the, uh, veil, they now have the orange, um, barriers there, and I would like to see that the city standardize on those, because the other concerns we have, that it's not Public Works, but it is Public Inspector, is with the gateway projects. They have totally eliminated the majority of the little asphalt curbs that we have out there. And all we've gotten is, well, we're gonna get it replaced, and that's response we got from the city staff. Oh, well, they're gonna replace it. There's no concerns for the fact that people have to walk along those. And I know the Tony who we've been working with and the construction crews are not happy with the speeds at which people are going through there. And it, I stand there and watch, and you're looking, people are still doing 40 miles an hour through that. And we still have to have people, because that's the only way into town. They still have to walk along there. And I really think we need to show more concern and have a standard of safety for our pedestrians with both Public Works projects and with contractors, um, going forward. And if there is an 800 number or a 124-hour, it needs to be shown clearly on the website and given to us, who are community, because I've spent a lot of my personal time out there trying to communicate with our neighborhood. And I'm not paid staff, and I, I can't do it a whole lot longer. So I'd like to see the city step up and protect our citizens out there, because I'm getting tired.
Thank you, Mary. Does that cover us for the day?
Mm-hmm.
Or for the evening, I should say?
I believe so.
Okay, then this meeting is adjourned.